Welcome to the Cranston City Council's special meeting for tonight, May 15th. At this time, the clerk, please take the roll.
Casper Kepiano.
Present.
Casper Bonano.
Here.
Councilwoman Braziano. Pastor Andrew Har.
Present.
Housewoman Heroyan.
Present.
Casper Ritz.
Present.
House of Trafficante. Council Vice President Wall.
Here.
Council President Reno.
Present. First up this evening, the only item for this evening's special meeting is business carried over. We have the new class BV Liquor License over the cap requiring the full council approval from Merlino's LLC doing business as Merlino's Pizzeria. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to, motion to approve.
Second.
Any additional comment from Councilwoman Heroyan as Chair of Safety Services?
I was told everything was in and I welcome them to Cranston.
Great, okay, we've got a motion, a second, any further discussion? There being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Casper Kepiano.
Yes.
Casper Bonano.
Yes.
Housewoman Heroyan.
Yes.
Casper Andrew Har.
Yes.
Casper Ritz.
Yes.
House of Trafficante. Council Vice President Wall.
Yes.
Council President Reno.
Yes. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it and Public Works will convene at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
The Order tonight, Public Works Committee. Clerk, may I please have a roll call?
Casper Kepiano.
Present.
Casper Bonano.
Present.
Casper Andrew Har.
Present.
House Vice President Wall.
Here.
Housewoman Heroyan.
Present.
Councilwoman Braziano. Council President Reno. Present.
Okay. Have an approval of the minutes from April 17th, 2025, the regular minute.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Clerk, may I please have a roll call?
Casper Kepiano.
Yes.
Councilman Bonano.
Yes.
Casper Andrew Har.
Yes.
House Vice President Wall.
Yes.
Housewoman Heroyan.
Yes.
House President Reno.
Yes.
Under committee matters carried over, there are none, so I'm going to go directly to public comment on docketed matters only. Please just state your name and your address.
My name is Robert Ferry and I live at 2426 Cranston Street in Cranston, Rhode Island. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I have two items, I'll be really quick. Last month, I attended the council meeting after reading an article in the Herald that said the Budlong Pool was not going to open this summer. And that there was a rush on to get a splash pad built on Doric Avenue, which was the first I had heard of it. I spoke at the council meeting in reference to this. And as I understand, they're going to close one of the basketball courts on Doric Avenue to put up a splash pad. And then in the article in the Herald, it said it was going to cost close to $960,000. And I said at the council meeting, I hope that figure is not right because it just sounds like an awful lot of money to build a splash pad. To build something that's going to be used eight weeks out of the year to replace something that's going to be used eight months out of the year, which would be the basketball court. So I'm hoping that tonight you have a discussion on that and you can update myself and maybe anyone else that's concerned as to whether or not we are going to spend close to a million dollars building a splash pad. Where's the money coming from? Who approved it? And does the council have any say on whether or not that gets built? So that's all I have to say on that matter. And the second matter is, last month, I sent an email to all the council people with about 10 pictures that showed excessive litter on the bike path. I received a response from the administration that the litter on the bike path is picked up three times a week, much to my surprise. And as many of you know, the bike path is my backyard. And I'm telling you right now, the litter does not get picked up three times a week. It might get picked up three times a year, but it doesn't get picked up three times a week. Now, I am here not to criticize anyone, especially Steve, who I'm trying to develop a relationship with on another matter. I'm not trying to criticize anyone. I just don't think that he has the manpower during the summer to send somebody on the bike path on a regular basis to pick the litter up. It just happens to be that the Hope Church did a massive cleanup two weeks ago and picked up like 60 bags of garbage. So the litter that was there was not something that just appeared. I was told that the litter was picked up and I took the pictures and then people littered right away. That litter was there for months and months. So I'm hoping that the litter on the bike path can be given some attention. Maybe once a week, maybe every other week, maybe we can get other groups to volunteer to help clean the bike path up. But I'm telling you right now, it does not get picked up three times a week. So on that matter, please pay attention to the bike path. It gets used by over 1,000 people every weekend. It is a jewel for the city. It just got repaved, it's beautiful, let's keep it beautiful. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you for coming tonight. On Zoom, that would like to speak tonight for public comment?
There is no public comment.
I'm going to close public comment tonight. Move down to new matter for the council. The first one is a petition from Narragansett Electric in Verizon, New England for placement of a new pole on Cranston Street. That pole will be located at 1381 Cranston Street. Director Carl, have you, could you come up for a minute? Do you have any comments on this?
Yes, we did have an opportunity to review what I did contact them. There was a misprint on the article, on the paper that was submitted to you. It's only one location. The reason they showed two locations was because there's a pole that's actually going in on the property side, on the private side, not the public side. So we only have one going in, in the sidewalk, and it's a service pole to bring electricity to the new development because they're going to be drawing more power than was drawn in the past.
I'm looking for a motion to approve this unless any.
Chairman, may I ask a question? Frank, who decides if a pole is going to be placed or not? Is it the administration or is it the electric company?
It's the electric company because it's based on their need.
All right, thank you.
Frank, could I ask one more question? Do we have a lot of poles in Cranston from the energy company when they put new poles in that they have not taken down the outdated poles?
We do. We've been battling with them to try to get them out of the Knightsville projects that we've been doing. They did cut the poles, they did put a concerted effort this season to start taking them out, but we did ask them to start on the new phase of Knightsville, which is from Randall Street down to the Print Works, because some of those poles are actually sitting on the sidewalk that we ultimately have to remove. So we asked them to clean up that side first before they go back to the part where, which was Phase Two of Knightsville, to go over there and do that other section first before they addressed inside Knightsville. We told them they are unsightly, we told them we really need to have them out, we spent a significant amount of money to improve that area and you have that ugly looking double pole set up that they're waiting for, they have to come and switch wires. It's not just them having to take out the pole, so they are working on that.
I've had, I'd say, a handful of constituents reach out to myself alone with old poles that are an eyesore in the neighborhood. That might be something we have to work on as a council to come up with an ordinance and maybe find them when they don't take down the old poles.
It wouldn't hurt, I mean, they're a difficult group, they're very independent of what they do, when they need something, they're here, when we need something, it's okay, and then they get to it when they can get to it. And that's what they've been telling us, that's why they took them what they did, they said they'll get to the poles when they can get to them. And they have started in that Knightsville area.
To approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Clerk, may I please have a roll call?
Casper Kepiano.
Yes.
Casper Bonano.
Yes.
Casper Andrew Har.
Yes.
Council Vice President Wall.
Yes.
Housewoman Heroyan.
Yes.
Council President Reno.
Yes.
Okay, the second item here is a petition from Narragansett Electric for installation of a new pole, but I believe that pole is located in Johnston, is that correct, Director?
Yes, that is correct, that pole is located on the bike path and it is across the street from the city property of Cranston, so it is part of Johnston and we did forward that back to Rhode Island Energy to tell them that.
How can we go about having this taken off of our agenda since it's not in the city of Cranston, it's in Johnston?
Well, if that's, if that's correct and you accept that, you can just deny it. If, right, I mean, well, I think they can deny it for lack of jurisdiction. It's not ours, it's not ours. Or you can just let it die, just, just don't take any action and just, it just goes away. Yeah, I mean, why don't you, I would, after consulting with Attorney Angel, maybe it might be cleaner if we take a vote based on lack of jurisdiction to deny on that basis.
Thank you.
Motion to deny on the basis of jurisdiction.
Second.
Director, motion to deny on the basis of a lack of jurisdiction.
Second.
May I please have a roll call? May I please have a roll call, vote clerk?
Casper Campiano.
Yes.
Yes.
Casper Nanduhar.
Yes.
Casper S. Wall.
Yes.
Casper Woman Heroyan.
Yes.
Casper Zerino.
Yes.
Patience, Council President Moreno.
Thank you. I have discussion of the addition of the splash pad on Doric Avenue. Many of us have received inquiries relative to the splash pad. So tonight is an opportunity for the Director of Parks and Rec to give us some information. And some of the things I'm sure that will be covered is to dispel rumors and separate fact from fiction about, you know, how big it's going to be, what's going to be the impact on the basketball courts, the timetable, what the cost is, where the money's coming from, things like that. Thank you.
Okay, I'll take one item at a time and just inform you what's going on and what the timetable is and where it's going and how it's going to affect that particular park. First of all, it will be at Doric Avenue. It will be taking one of the basketball courts away. With that being said, we're also redoing one at Dew Temple, and we plan on redoing the one at Cranston Stadium. So there should be more than enough basketball courts in that general area to go around, including Parkview. So we understand that losing one basketball court is not the best thing, but we're also going to be productive trying to facilitate the other facilities being done. So question number two is cost. The cost will be paid through, Recreation had nine hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in upper money that will be, some of that will be allocated toward this project. The sum of this project will be between two hundred and fifty and two hundred and ninety thousand. The apparatuses have already been ordered, coming in at a hundred and seventeen thousand. And we've been working with Public Works Director Frank Correio in regards to the path of leash resistance in regards to the actual construction. The good thing about that site is we have bathrooms, running water, very close to the particular site. It's a flat surface. It's close to drainage. So we're hoping that some of those factors will make it a smooth transition into a water, a splash pad. Timetable, timetable right now looks like to be mid-July as a, as a date of opening. We have delivery dates already set. I got an email just today that basically we're going to be getting the equipment for this particular site second week in July, roughly about July tenth to July thirteenth. Once we pick a vendor, which Director Correio is working on right now, we should be on our way pretty quickly. We've met with Water Supply Board in regards to the water flow and the pressure, and all of that checks out fine. And we should be on our way as far as that's concerned. I think you'd be very impressed. I sent a picture to Mr. Lima in regards to what the water park will look like. That is the actual rendition of what it will look like. It's based on different age groups doing different things. The kites, the spinning wheels, the workstations, a little bit of everything for every age group. So we anticipate this being the size of the basketball court, a little bit smaller, but definitely something that will be utilized heavily once it's, once it's built. I think I hit everything. I.
When would you anticipate this to be up and running?
I say middle of July, middle of July.
And I have a question, like, to run this splash pad, the water bill, electric bill.
It's really minimal, to be honest with you, because it's just like your sprinkler system and your irrigation system. You can set the pressure. You can do seventy percent, eighty percent, ninety percent. What, you know, we don't see a huge cost to this. And one of the beauties of this particular splash pad, unlike the one we have, is it's not a recirculatory system. You're using fresh water, so the maintenance is a lot easier. Recirculatory systems have to, you have to chlorinate it on a regular basis. You have to clean the filters on a regular basis. It's really, there's a lot of maintenance involved. This does not have that problem.
No staff would be needed here at all?
No, we would probably put one staff person just to monitor the bathrooms and cleaning the restrooms. That would probably be in our best interest to do that, but other than that, no.
All right, thank you. Does anyone, Councilman Wall?
Thank you for, and this, very nice drawing of it. It looks very nice. Listen, I'll first start, I know I just expressed this to Director Moretti when he brought up the splash pad. Listen, it looks, looks like a lovely asset for the city. It'll be good for the kids. I only wish there was a way you didn't have to take that basketball court out. You know, in Cranston, those are probably some of the finer courts we have in the city and the most used courts they have in the city. I hope, speaking, and I don't know if I'm off the agenda, but when do we expect the other courts to be done? Because basketball, it's a good thing for kids to get out and play some basketball during the summer. That'd be one part. I have another follow-up.
Well, fortunately, Dew Temple has already been awarded, and it is going to be done right after the school year. We don't want to, we do not want to, you know, offset the kids from not having recess and what have you. But that's already been awarded. They'll get new glass backboards. They'll get new lines. It'll look really nice. And also Doric will be done. Doric is part of a capital improvement plan. So Doric is going to have a facelift as well, the basketball court. So that'll also get fiberglass boards, new lines, new asphalt. It'll be a serious upgrade. And again, Parkview will also see a brand-new basketball court as well. So I think I said this before, we're going to try to hit as many spots as we can with what we have. And then capital improvement money through a four-year period should take care of a lot of, a lot more venues. So this is just the start of it. I anticipate doing a heck of a lot more down the road.
Thank you. And the follow-up to that, and I just have a couple. I don't want to monopolize your time. You haven't, you have not, as of yet, picked a vendor for the splash pad project? That's, no?
No, we have not. We've been in discussion in regards to, I think, Mr. Correio could probably touch on that a little bit better than I can. But we're basically, we're going to solicit some, some vendors to see what their timeline is, and we're going to take it from there.
Well, I would, so that was, I was going with that. Is it premature to give it, you know, a date of mid-July if we don't even have a vendor?
We're anticipating.
If I can. What we are doing is, we just put together all of the plans, the specifications, and the proposal pages for that. I just completed that today. By Monday of next week, that'll go into a bid waiver. We're going to solicit four to five different vendors. The, the individual that does a lot of these splash pads in the state of Rhode Island, they've done a significant number of them in Providence. She gave us the name of at least eight different contractors that are in the local area that have all done these splash pads in the past. So what we are going to do is take those documents, and then we will send them out to at least five of those contractors and asking them to submit bids. And we'll ask them to do those bids within a seven-day period. So before the end of this month, it would be awarded.
And a precondition would be to have it done by a certain time? Are you going to include that in your bid?
Yeah, we're going to put it in as either a thirty- or forty-five-day completion date, which is, it's going to be a challenge because, you know, the, the amount of concrete that has to be placed because when they remove that basketball court, everything that goes in there is now going to be concrete, and it's going to be like a sidewalk. And you do want to try to cure that with water and not just put them down and let it sit in the sun because it will dry, and you will end up with shrinkage cracks. So we are going to try to alternate the pads that they put in, try to wet treat, wet, wet cure them for a seven-day period, and then they can continue working with the next lab. So it should be within a couple of weeks that they can get all the concrete in, and the rest of it is just putting the finished fixtures on top.
And mine next, you don't have to get up for this. Just give me up and down. I couldn't quite hear you. Two hundred and ninety thousand dollars was what we projected here for this?
Between two fifty and two ninety.
Thank you. All set. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The basketball court draws a big crowd. I realize that, and now with the splash pad, it'll be even greater. Are you going to upgrade the parking lot as well in that area?
There hasn't been talk of that as of yet. Obviously, we'll have to take a look at that if it becomes a problem. I mean, obviously, there's on-street parking, and there's a small parking lot there in a side street. But if it does become a problem, I'm sure we will address it at that point.
Casper Nanduhar.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I thank you for bringing all those people from this splash pad over to Ward Three. Is there any movement on new nets and stuff like that for, for stadium? That's my first question.
Yes, Cranston Stadium, the goal and objective is we get CDBG money that's going to open up, and we're going to replace those nets and backboards in the whole system, and we're going to do some asphalt there as well. We're upgrading that one hundred percent.
And I also want to voice a concern. I mean, I've been by that park, and people play well into November, December, even January if the weather's good. So I mean, removing that basketball court from there is, is going to be, you know, we're going to really miss it. The next question I have, this splash pad, it's for all Cranston residents, right?
Correct.
From my, my ward, we go over there too, no issues. Okay. Thank you.
There's no ticket prices.
Thanks.
Casper Campolo Piano.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. The water, does that come on and off with motion, or is it just go on?
Sensors. It's sensors. And what happens is it's really efficient. If somebody's not using it, and it's not going to go on, and it's not going to go on. Every fixture is not going to go on at once. It's going to, it's all by, by satellite and by sensors.
I'd like to just add one point. What they do have at each end of it is little actuators. They're low-voltage actuators, and what happens is the kids get to run over. They push the button. It's on a timer. So certain features will run for a certain time. Once they go out, then the kids get to go back, push that actuator and reactivate it. So it's not running constantly, and it's not going to be a constant draw on the water system.
That's awesome. All right, thank you. Is, is, can the city do any of this work, or maybe the pre-work to this, to facilitate, to make it a little faster, or?
There's really not much pre-work to be done because the existing fencing is going to stay. There's really minimal stuff that could be done at this point. Most of it has to be plumbing, a plumbing vendor, especially to, to bring in the service to the, to the park, and then basically the park itself, which is basically what we need the vendor to do as a whole anyways.
I just want to go on record as saying, as a grandfather, young grandchildren, I am one hundred percent for splash pads. Municipalities throughout the country are moving towards this. I go through New York City, and I think you can't walk a block without seeing one. And in the hot summer months, it's a great way to cool off. It's not dangerous. It's a lot of fun. A lot of ages can use it. So I'm looking forward to seeing this and seeing the kids enjoy it. So thank you.
Sure.
On a timer?
Yes.
All right, so it can't be saved, kids are out at one AM?
No.
Okay.
What will happen is if we, let's say we open up at twelve o'clock, the actuators won't stop until twelve o'clock noon. And if we close at five, the actuator will shut down, and the system will shut down as well.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next matter, if you want to stay up, we're going to also use. Woman Graziano had some questions about the litter pickup on the bike path following former Representative Ferry's questions about it. Do you want to just update us a little since you've taken the new leadership post?
Sure.
I think most of us have seen a very positive change in the way things are being done.
I appreciate that. We've been on that bike path at least twice a week, sometimes three times a week. And I say that because not every time that we go on there do we pick up basic litter. What we do pick up is mattresses, tires, carriages, pieces of furniture, strollers. It's not just basic garbage. So when we say, when I say we go out there on a regular basis, we do, because those large items take up an abundance of space. I'll go even as far as to say they, we find some of our barrels down there, recreation barrels, that are being burned as a source of heat. So as far as the, the litter, yes, we go there. We try to get there at least twice a week. Has it been spotty? And the only reason why I will say it's been spotty is because the weather hasn't cooperated with us at, at our area parks with basic maintenance. I mean, grass is growing at an alarming rate right now, and so is the garbage that is associated with leagues that are playing. Not an excuse, just, just the fact of, of doing business on a, on a daily basis. Hope Church, I met with them. They did a great job. It wasn't sixty bags of garbage. It was more like a hundred and sixty. We took a, we took the redump truck full loads to the landfill, and we had a full pickup truck full of stuff as well. Some areas are worse than others on the bike path, but for the most part, I think it's, it's in pretty decent shape. Will, can it get better? Absolutely. But I think overall, we've done a decent job with that. We can always get better. But like I said, I think right now it stands to be probably the best it's looked in a while.
Thank you. Question with the dumping there. Does the city have any cameras in areas where they could kind of try to trace who's dumping large items there?
No, no, unfortunately, no. In, in the lower part, there's some concern that some of the local businesses are even having, having fun with dumping illegal stuff as well. You know, we, we find all kinds of stuff. We find squatters. We find homeless people. We, we report that to the police. We try to be as diligent as we can. And again, like I said, sometimes when we go down there, it's not garbage. It's mattresses by, by a half dozen, by the dozen. It's, it's, we got tents, pop-up tents, tons of those. I mean, the items are not basic garbage. That's all I can tell you. You're welcome.
Members have any questions today for the Director? Councilman Wall?
Listen, and it's good to hear because there's a very proactive, positive tone as you've taken this position, how you want to go forward. I do, I don't want to discount what the, what the speaker said this evening. There was a lot of trash on there in the past, in past years, and it, I don't know if it was done, as was said before, three times a year, but it didn't seem like it was done three times a week either. So somewhere in there, there's a happy medium, and it, it has, it does need some, you know, love and care and consistent trash pickup because people are using it a lot, and I'm sure you do have an overwhelming, you know, job. A lot of people use it, and we hear, you know, hear questions. I write, sometimes I'll walk or ride my bike. I see, I see it myself. So it's something, please, you know, we ask you to, you know, definitely.
We're going to be diligent about it, and one of the other things this council approved, or actually the planning department in the council approved a brand-new garbage truck for us. So come July one, I can order that garbage truck. So we'll have two garbage trucks. We'll have a spare, which will obviously help us in this, in this fight, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Council President Moreno.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Piscapello. The question I had is the state's responsibility. Where does that begin? Where does that end? I know there's an agreement with the city. It's come up, I think, in prior terms. And if I recall correctly, there was a maximum expenditure on the city's part relative to the maintenance for the bike path. So that's also part of my question. Basically, even if we are charged with the cleanup and maintenance of the bike path, if it exceeds a certain cost, can we then try and recruit that on a state level?
From what I understand, the agreement was the state's responsible for the first ten thousand dollars, and then we're responsible for the rest. So coming in, when I came in, I'm not sure. So coming in, when I came in, I'm not sure. I'm sure that's already been gobbled up for this year. But that's something I can definitely look into, on a, you know, in-depth look to it. Cause I'm really, I'm gonna be honest with you, I really am not familiar with the entire agreement per se. And that's something I'll have to research. But I, I know that there was a four million dollar investment in that particular site. And I know there's, there's something written into it that it's a shared relationship. So I'd definitely look into it.
Yeah, cause that'd be great. And who knows, maybe we can tap into the state even maintaining and cleaning up some of the bike path on a regular basis to alleviate the burden on the city.
Sure.
Thanks.
Councilman Andehow?
Director, I received an email yesterday from a Mary Curtin and she wants to basically thank you and the staff for cleaning up the bike path. She had a complaint a few weeks ago, but she said it's, it's totally different and it's a lot cleaner now. I understand the manpower or the, the labor power you need over there. You're short-staffed, correct?
I wouldn't say we're short-staffed, but every time a person calls out or goes on leave or surgery or what have you, it definitely hinges what we do. So to be at maximum capacity is always nice, but it doesn't happen very often because of one situation or another.
I've, I've urged the, the people that reach out to me in regards to the bike path to volunteer. And one of their main, you know, concerns is that there's like black trash bags instead of barrels. So especially near the Lowe's area, that, that plaza, they need a lot of help. I reached out to Director Salisbury from Corrections to see if maybe we could come into a partnership with probation. People that need five, ten hours of community service hours, maybe they could volunteer for you. So if that were to pan out, I'll definitely send them your way so that way you could have more hands.
And we can provide a, a dump truck or a truck to, to assist with that. That would be great.
But I, I really wanna thank you because, you know, I, I drive by it every day and it looks a lot cleaner.
Appreciate it. And there are other cleanup scheduled there. YMCA did a small cleanup at, at the Bane site, where the walking track is. We, it's funny, we just picked up a tire that came from a caterpillar. It looks like somebody had a workout session there, like a, I don't know what it is, a He-Man competition or whatever, but we had, it took five guys to pick up this tire. And it was just dumped in the, in the Bane, on the Bane walking track. So it, it's, listen, we're gonna be diligent. Will we miss some stuff? Absolutely. But, you know, understand that we're, we're gonna be on it for sure.
Thank you, Director.
Steve, I realize you've got a shortage of manpower in your, in your particular department. I hope you approach the mayor about summer help. In terms of basically increasing your crew, so to speak. I know they can't work machinery, I realize that, but they can certainly pick up litter at our playgrounds and our bike paths and other areas.
My, my, my plan is to hire between six and eight high school slash college-age students to do just that and to do trimming and, and blowing. That is, is, it's important to all these sites. Sometimes we go there and we cut them and we don't have the manpower to go back and trim. Especially with the weather like this, we're, we're trying to stay ahead of the cutting. So one hundred percent that's gonna happen.
We also do have the juvenile hand board here in Cranston. And a lot of times the students need to get community service hours. I don't know if you could reach out to Officer Dennehy from the juvenile hand board or Raymond Koya to maybe see if some of them, they just need to be supervised while they're doing it. And that might be something the community police officer is willing to do.
Sure, maybe the SROs can help us, for sure.
Anyone else? Thank you, Director. I appreciate it. Okay, I think we can adjourn this meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. This meeting to, the ordinance committee meeting to order on, what's it, May fifteenth? Clerk, can you please take a roll?
Councilman Campopiano?
Present.
Councilman Banano?
Present.
Councilwoman Graziano? Councilwoman Heroyan?
Present.
Council Vice President Wall?
Here.
Councilman Anduhar?
Present.
Councilperson Marino?
Present.
I would like a motion to approve the minutes for the April seventeenth, twenty twenty-five meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Clerk, can you please take a roll?
Councilman Campopiano?
Yes.
Councilman Banano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Heroyan?
Yes.
Council Vice President Wall?
Yes.
Councilman Anduhar?
Yes.
Councilperson Marino?
Yes.
Committee business varies, there's nothing to carry over. Public comment, is there anybody in the audience that would like to comment on anything on the agenda? Please come up. If you could just state your name and address, please.
I was, I wasn't aware.
Just your name and address.
My name is Fabrice De Souza, I'm at sixty-four Sabre Street. I took my hat off, so I apologize for the hat hair, I didn't know I would be on camera here. I believe you came and knocked on my home in, in regards to turning Sabre Street, at least my portion of Sabre Street completely, no parking. I wasn't exactly sure as to why we didn't touch base that, that specific day, or would that be something you could answer? Just so I, I'm just, I'm not unaware of as.
We can't, I can't dialogue with you, but um,
Okay, okay.
You can just state what you need.
Sure, my, my concern was, there are, there are only five homes on that portion of the road. I know that Twin Oaks has been there a long time. I originally came here today to just say, you know, my, voice my opinion in that I, I didn't want that to be turned completely no parking because I, I just feel like it impacts, at, at least three of the five homes that I know of on that road don't want that to be turned no parking. But as far as, I, I do think that there is another option in all fairness, I, I'm not sure of the reason, but I do believe maybe people coming from the restaurant could be, you know, there's, there's drunks everywhere that could be parking in front of someone's home. And then how many times can you do that before somebody probably calls you guys and maybe you don't want phone calls? I can only imagine what, what it is, but from my end of it, I'd lose out on just having, being able to just have somebody stop by, which is a frequent thing when you work all the time. You have very little time to kinda give, I, I guess, to, to enjoyment of, of life at times. I can know, you can all relate to that, you're here at this hour. But my, my point was if, no, again, I don't know why exactly, I can imagine it was maybe complaints from the, the two neighbors closest to the Twin Oaks parking lot exit. I would say that currently the side of the road that is no parking, doesn't have any driveway, doesn't have any driveway space on it. So I, I'm not sure if it was looked at, if there's a specific reason for it, but e- even just to be in all fairness to everyone on the road, even the people that may have or may not have complained, I don't know. If we were to, instead of moving forward with turning the whole part, portion of the road to no parking, if you simply just transferred the side of the, the, the side of the road in which the part, no parking sign is enforced, you would have a clear shot at, at, at pretty much just not having the issue with the people that may have the issue with, with, you know, patrons of the restaurant parking in front of the driveway. And you would also be appealing to the, the three homes on that road out of the five homes that don't want this to move forward. So it could be a win-win for everyone. I don't know if you have the ability to discuss that further in time or if you need to make a decision tonight. I know it would mean a lot to my household, I can't speak for everyone else. I did think that would be a solution that would be in everyone's fairness and you could probably not receive any phone calls. It would also make the entry into the parking lot. I think it would, it would deter people from parking that way because they would, they would have to pretty much not go the normal route and come out of the Twin Oaks parking lot and park. They would have to turn around or go down a side street to get there to park the correct way, the orientation of that road. So just something else to think about as well. That's, that's it. I thank you for, I know this is a small topic and, and, and consideration to everything else, but I do appreciate you hearing me, hearing me out.
No, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience? Technical clerk, anyone online?
There is no public comment online.
I would like to close public comment.
Mr. Chair? May I make a motion to take new matters before the committee out of order?
So much.
Second.
Okay, I would like to, I guess we're gonna take, looking for a motion to, oh, roll call, roll call, oh, sorry.
Councilman Campopiano?
Yes.
Councilman Banano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Heroyan? Council Vice President Wall?
Yes.
Councilman Anduhar?
Yes.
Councilperson Marino?
Yes.
I would like to start with the resolution for the school transportation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Myself, Councilman Trafficante, Council President Marino have put forth a resolution.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just identify the resolution for the record, please.
We are taking the new, the resolution of twenty-five oh-two, school transportation resolution for out-of-district homeless and private school students.
Thank you. So this sponsored by myself, Councilman Trafficante and Council President Marino. What it does is, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but what it does is it asks the state to share in some of the cost of transporting private school students throughout the state, which could, if they decided to fully fund it, which could allow for a savings to the city of Cranston for up to eight hundred and ninety, eight hundred and thirty, eight hundred and ninety thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars. You know, we just went through the budget and through the budget, you know, we, we all, nine of us tried our best to support the schools and help them meet their, you know, gap in funding from what they requested and what the city side was able to give them. And I believe that if the state were to pick up their fair share in this particular way, that would help them even further. So I urge passage.
Okay. Motion to.
Chairman?
Yes.
Unfunded mandates have been with us for years, unfortunately. Whether it be in transportation, whether it be in special education, whether it be restricted funds in terms of multi-language learners, it's, it's a burden that cities and towns have to live with each and every year. And any kind of relief that we can get from the state of Rhode Island, be a tremendous help for, for our school department, especially in the city of Cranston, because we have a number of private school students that we, we pay the cost and bear the burden of that cost.
Thank you. When I entertain a motion to approve.
I believe other cities and towns have passed the resolution similar to this, correct?
Yes.
We, we have a motion to approve first and then we'll go into discussion.
Mr. Chairman, we're gonna need a motion by someone other than a sponsor.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Clerk, please take a roll.
Got a question.
Discussion, discussion, sorry, sorry.
The answer is yes. Just, just to, through the chair, the school committee passed this exact language. Cranston, Cranston School Committee passed this exact language. And the language was taken from other cities and towns which have also passed this exact slang, exact language, with the exception of it being tailored to their particular community. So when crafting this, I took what the school committee wrote and, and just, you know, adjusted it a little bit to make it appropriate for our body. But yes, numerous cities and towns throughout the state and our school committee have passed similar, almost identical language.
Perfect.
Anyone else? Clerk, please take a roll.
Councilman Campopiano?
Yes.
Councilman Banano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Heroyan?
Yes.
Council Vice President Wall?
Yes.
Councilman Anduhar?
Yes.
Councilperson Marino?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I'm looking to move on to the next one, which would be resolution for school transportation resolution in support of H five four two oh and S six three six and S three nine seven.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, to explain, through the chair to the rest of my, my colleagues. There are three bills at the State House, one in the House and two in the Senate, that essentially help transportation, again, making it more affordable to the cities and towns. Some of these things address lack of drivers. For instance, and I'm not gonna get into too many details, but for instance, if, if a person has a school bus endorsement in the CDL in the state of Massachusetts, it's not reciprocated in Rhode Island currently. This legislation at the state level will enable that reciprocity to make it easier for people with out-of-state licenses to, you know, drive our, our students. The, the same level of license in the other state would be good in Rhode Island. It also increases the number from eight to ten, the amount of students allowed to be in a vehicle, which, you know, if you multiply that over however many small buses there are in our city, could also realize the city some savings. So that's the gist of that. It's, it's nothing earth-shattering, just trying to get a few more drivers. And the reason why it was sponsored at the state level was a, a lack of drivers. There was a lack of drivers that were able and certified. So this would ease some of those regulations for people who have already been certified in another state.
Looking for a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, can you please take a roll?
Councilman Campopiano?
Yes.
Councilman Banano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Heroyan?
Yes.
Council Vice President Wall?
Yes.
Councilman Anduhar?
Yes.
Councilperson Marino?
Yes.
Great, now we're moving on to the next resolution, Public Schools Fair Funding Formula sponsored by Councilman Banano and Councilman Trafficante, Council President Marino and Councilman Campobuana.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the kinda big one and I will mention that Joe Balducci is here from Cranston Public Schools for any specific questions about this. But we've mentioned this before, I mentioned it on the floor before and we talked about it a lot in the budget. I'm not gonna, again, go through each and every, I'm not gonna read the whole thing. However, what the thrust of this resolution does is it asks the state to essentially revert back to the old fair funding formula before it was altered to skew some of the money away from public schools, towards charter schools that are not run by a city or town and a public school district. If the fair funding formula was not altered, Cranston would, in this year's budget, realize eight hundred seventy-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars within the state share ratio. So the city of Cranston, and I would gather some other districts as well. But specifically, the city of Cranston would like to tell our state delegation and the state delegation as a whole that we would like them to revert back to the old fair funding formula and state, state share ratio so Cranston can realize that eight hundred seventy-six plus thousand dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm looking for a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes, Councilman.
I wanna echo Councilman's remarks. I just wanna say thank you to the state of Rhode Island this year in particular. Our schools were facing a devastating situation in terms of the funding for our schools. Unfortunately, the state came through at one point one million dollars in addition to what they appropriated previously. So it, it was a big, big help. So I wanna say thank you to the state of Rhode Island and the General Assembly.
Anyone else? Clerk, please take a roll.
Councilman Campopiano?
Yes.
Council?
Yes.
Councilwoman Heroyan?
Yes.
Council Vice President Wall?
Yes.
Councilman Anduhar?
Yes.
Councilperson Marino?
Yes.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I just wanna say thank you for taking that out of order. I need to step away, I'm going to honors night next door to present scholarship for Cranston East alumni on behalf of their board, so I'm leaving. But thank you for taking that out of order, I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Alright, now we're moving on to ordinance four dash two five zero two, ordinance and amendment of title ten, chapter thirty-two, section thirty of the city of Cranston, two thousand and five, entitled Multiway Stop at Intersections. So I, I received a phone call by the Diaz family at eighty-one Cleveland. And by going there, I realized that. And by going there, I realized that on governor, there is no stop sign. So there's a lot of kids in that area and the families basically would, would want more safety. So that's why they're requesting a stop, an additional stop sign to make it a four-way stop sign. So that's basically why I brought it up to everybody's attention and I, I urge that I get support on this.
Through the chair, if I may, uh, before we go any further, um, I, two questions. One, has this been referred to the, uh, Bureau of Traffic Safety, to the traffic engineer for an opinion, and have we received one?
Um, no, we have not received one, this will be referred to the traffic engineering department, so they could do their study and then hopefully we get it done.
Well, it, it can't, it can't be, the ordinance can't be approved until we get either a response or sixty days elapses from the date of the request. So, this would, um, will have to be continued. You can't adopt it.
So the recommendation would be for, uh, the committee to send a request to traffic safety to provide a study, report back to the committee within sixty days. If they fail to report back within sixty days, then you can take action.
Correct.
And that would be the case also, uh, you know, with anything of this nature.
Correct.
They would need to do a traffic study, it's charter requirement.
Thank you. Entertaining motion to.
Just, I just want to be clear, I'll, so it was to, a motion to refer this to the traffic engineer for studying, is that, am I clear on that?
I think that's the best way to do it, to make it an official request, because what, and inevitably what has happened over the years, at least when I've been here, there's always been some misconception or confusion as to whether or not, number one, a request went out, number two, who makes it, and number three, when did it go out? So, if you formalize it, send it over, it removes all confusion and all that.
So I'm looking for a motion to send this
You got it.
Statement or ordinance to, uh, receive a traffic study.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to request a traffic study, send this to the traffic engineer, that would be, uh, ordinance four two five oh two.
Any discussion? Clerk, please take a roll.
Councilman Campiano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Heroyan?
Yes.
Council Vice President Wall?
Yes.
Councilman Andujah?
Yes.
Councilwoman Presmino?
Okay, uh, final one would be, uh, ordinance and amendment of chapter ten. I mean, title ten, chapter thirty-two, section forty of the city of Cranston, two thousand and five, entitled No Parking on Certain Streets. So, I went to the area and I see we have a resident here that has some concern. There's a famous restaurant that's in the area and a lot of people get their driveways blocked and cars park on the sidewalk. So we came up with the solution that if we put no parking, it would, you know, alleviate a lot of the frustration from the neighbors. Um, I also talked to the administration about possibly if somebody were to have a party on a Saturday, Friday night, Sunday morning, or even Sunday day, um, they could easily call the police station and say, listen, I'm a resident at this street at this address and we're having a party, so that way the cars, you know, hopefully won't be ticketed. Um, but it is, it is a nuisance for the neighbors, so that's why I brought it up. I knocked on everybody's door, oh my God, I believe, three out of five. And I want to say about half of them were in favor of it. And, you know, the other person didn't really have much interest in it. So, that's why I brought it up, um, and I, I urge for passage. Motion to approve.
Looking for a motion to approve, uh, it has to be another motion to refer to the, to the traffic bureau.
So I'm, I'm looking for a motion to transfer
Refer.
Refer this ordinance or this study to the traffic engineer for further study.
I'm gonna make a motion to refer ordinance four two five oh three to the traffic engineer for a traffic study.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion, clerk, please take a roll.
Councilman Campiano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Heroyan?
Yes.
Council Vice President Wall?
Yes.
Councilman Andujah?
Yes.
Councilwoman Presmino?
Yes.
Um, there are no council communications, I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor, say aye. Ayes have no nays. Thank you.